Market of attendance, declarations of conflict of interest, anyone? Approval of agenda, any additions or deletions? Moved and seconded, any discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor. Aye. Contrary, motion carried, gas tax formula, CIO. And you're gonna have to probably, this might not work. Nope. That's me again. Good. There you go.
Thank you, worship. So, the gas tax study report that you have from CanMac Economics was commissioned by the Towns Caucus, UNSM, back in, it was delivered in March, to take a look, the purpose of the study was to take a look at some options around the gas tax allocation formula. And one of the things that we had said about the gas tax allocation formula prior to the report was that we thought that assets, your asset base ought to be part of your infrastructure base ought to be part of the formula. Because when the, when the gas tax program was initially conceived, it was about the infrastructure deficit. FCM lobbied the federal government on the basis of the infrastructure deficit. That is, the infrastructure that is, that is beyond its useful life in the towns and cities and municipalities, and that needed to be replaced for which there weren't sufficient funds available. And the FCM had estimated that number to be in the hundreds of billions. So, the federal government introduced the gas tax, I believe in 2005, and it was, it was allocated to the provinces based on a per capita basis because, as the deputy minister says, they didn't have a better idea. It was a simple number that was, that was verifiable through StatsCan, and so they, they divided the, the gas tax across the country to the provinces, within the provincial districts, by per capita. But then, they, they allowed, within each province, the municipal associations and whatnot to, to figure out how they would allocate the money from that level down to the municipalities. And so, every province is probably a little bit different. And in, in 2005, there was different data available than what we have today. Since that time, we've been required to, every municipality in, in the country has been required to account for their tangible capital assets, their infrastructure, and they've been required to account for the depreciation. So, every municipality has on its books a number that represents how much of their infrastructure has been used up, right? And they have a number that is how much, how much has still got useful life, which I think if, if you look at the CanMac study, he refers to that number as the net assets. Okay? So, that is the, the still useful portion of your infrastructure that you have on your books. The, so that's close to what we were looking for. We talked about, we thought assets would be a part. It came back to why the program was, was created in the first place. It wasn't about what you wanted to do in the future so much as what you had done in the past and weren't able to afford. So, the gas tax transfer was to help to fill in a hole that already existed. So, why would assets be, be a better measure or better part of the formula than, say, population? Well, in, in cities, probably, there's a strong correlation between population and assets. But when you get outside of cities, rural municipalities and small towns, rural municipalities tend to have more people, frankly, and less infrastructure. They're not responsible for the roads and the bridges and so on. Towns tend to be fairly infrastructure-heavy, and we have to meet all the same environmental requirements as, as big cities. So, assets kinda makes sense if you think about with the purpose of the program, and trying to get the money to the places where the assets or the used-up infrastructure is. The, the CanMac study uses net assets, which is the, the non-used-up part. So, it's close, but it isn't exactly what we were thinking or what the program was, was intended to address. The program was intended to address that part that is used up. So, net assets, so if you go out, if we went out tomorrow and built a new, a new swimming pool, right, that might add ten, fifteen million dollars to our assets, and in fact, to our net assets. Because as a brand-new asset, none of it is used up yet.
It's not used up yet?
It's, it's not used up yet. So, it's, it's brand-new, it's shiny, right? So, so in, in the net asset formula, you're, what you're taking into account is the shiny, usable stuff, as opposed to the stuff that has, has gone past its useful life, which is the hundreds of billions of dollar number that FCM talked about in order to get, to get the program approved. So, looking at the study, from my, from my perspective, I think it, it came close in some regards. And I think on principle, we should, we should probably support a formula that relies heavily on the assets. But I don't think it's net assets. I think it's either total assets or fully depreciated assets. Okay? So, if, if we are looking to comment on the study, which is what we were told at the Towns Caucus meeting at the conference, that no municipalities had, had actually provided feedback on this, my feedback, and the Town Caucus meeting where it was presented, it was, the mood in the room seemed to be, just leave it alone. But I think, on principle, you might wanna say that the formula should include an element that, that addresses the asset base. Ideally, that is the, the fully depreciated assets, and that that might, might best be the, the, the heaviest part of the formula, if, if the money is to go in the direction that was the original intention. Is any of that clear?
It's, it's very clear to me, and, and you're right on the depreciated, because the net doesn't tell you so much what you need money for. If they're giving us money that's to be utilized for something we require, or that it's a need, then it, it should be on the fully depreciated, or even a future need. I don't know if that even was a consideration, the future needs of, of a municipal unit. May as well keep that on. Go ahead.
Yeah, I know future need wasn't because, outside of, outside of replacement.
Okay.
Right? So...
And that's, that would count towards fully depreciated, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's right, kind of. The, I mean, the, the truth is, is the depreciation in our books is based on original, or sorry, value of the assets is based on the original purchase price. So, for instance, if you think of the wastewater facility, when that was built, if that was a five million dollar facility, I don't know if that's anywhere near what it was, but if you looked to replace it in 15 years, it's probably a thirty, forty million dollar facility. And so, you know, the, the fully depreciated asset on the books has a much lower value than the replacement. But if you don't have a wastewater treatment facility at all, you know, then, then having one that's fully depreciated, five million, you know, relatively speaking, and for the purposes of allo...
At the time, was it?
Okay. So, so my thirty million dollar figure should also escalate.
So, so can I ask a question in the middle of that? So, how do you, how do you reflect that? How do you reflect that costs five million, the fully depreciated, fully depreciated, but it's gonna cost you, what'd you say Danny, sixteen, to replace? Probably more now, right? But let's go, let's go with, let's go with twenty. How, how do you reflect that?
So, so Jerry, Jerry speaks to this better than I do, but we, we often talk to our colleagues about, about funding our depreciation. So, that's funding the depreciation of the original purchase, or original cost. And our colleagues will often say to us, well, you don't need to do that, because, you know, you'll get federal infrastructure funding, and you'll get provincial, and, and so you only have to really provide a third. But our perspective is, by the time you replace it, it's probably tripled in cost. So, if you fund the original depreciation, you are probably only funding your share of future replacement, if you're successful in getting...
If you're successful, getting funded.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you, worship. Okay, so, let's cut to the chase here. Let's get, let's get to the meat of it, okay? So, I didn't go through all this, because a lot of it I don't understand. I know that figures don't lie, it's liars that figure, I know all that stuff, and, to some extent, not always, but... What are you, what are you suggesting, you suggested what you just said, but what are you recommending that this council do? What should we do to, in response to the gas tax study? What would you like to see us do as a council to be, to let people know that here's, here's our thought on it? We've talked about different things, your, your projections of how the town is gonna, gonna figure out in a few years because of population finance, the, the boom, not boom, and all the other good stuff. So, and for infrastructure things, we all got big wish lists, there's, there are certain things that we have to maintain as being a town. So, what are you suggesting that we should do, and what, what response should we send back? A strong voice, which I think we should, and what is it that we should be doing than spending a whole lot of time on this? We should just look at it and, and take, take a pulse around the table, and let's do it? That's my thought.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So, so there'll be all kinds of, I expect different perspectives on this. My perspective is that on the principle of, of purpose of the program and the issue that we have, being the infrastructure deficit, that we ought to say that your total assets or your full, or, better yet, your fully depreciated assets should be the basis on which the gas tax is allocated. You start there. Reality, I mean realistically, not everyone's gonna agree with that, and, and there will be a process if the gas tax formula changes, but I think we should be insisting that that should be the formula. That goes into Town Caucus, Town Caucus takes a position, UNSM deals with this, and ultimately, maybe there's a change, but I think we should say that so that it, there's a, so there's a possibility that people might pay attention and think about, not just the, and I, not just what's gonna make everyone happy, and what is equitable, and, and whatnot. I, I tend to lean more on the fair side than the equitable side. I think they're two different things. I think fair is, you have a program created for a purpose, there's a way that you can direct the funds to, to get the best, the best effectiveness out of the program. So, to me, the fair thing to do is to use that as your formula. So, total assets, or, better yet, fully depreciated assets.
Yep. Just one more thing. So, what you, I hear what you're saying, and that's great. This is basically what we talked about before, and we had some, some questions and that on it, so, you know, is it reasonable to, to ask the question that you would draft something up, and at a future meeting, or this meeting, or whatever, probably a future meeting, committee of the whole, you would bring it to the committee of the whole, a, a response to what, what questions that are being asked there? And I, I like what you're saying, and I think that's the proper, and that's probably the way to go, is to let other municipal units have the chance to either say yes, no, or whatever. This is, this is just our response, so... Would it be fair to ask, to, for you to draft up, staff to draft up some sort of a, a working paper where we could look at it and say, this is what we want to send off to the other municipal units? Would that, I guess that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
And I'll ask me other members to comment on, I guess.
Jim, got anything?
Just wanted to understand a little bit more, Jeff. You talked about fully depreciated assets. What does, what do you, what's the detail on that one?
I should probably say, total depreciation as opposed to fully depreciated assets, recognizing that, take the case of our wastewater treatment plant, it's not fully depreciated, but it's got twenty-some years of depreciation accumulated. So, total depreciation as opposed to fully depreciated assets. So, on our books, we have a number. We have a, a number that's in the millions of dollars for depreciation, accumulated depreciation.
Yeah.
Okay? That number represents, if we don't fund it, our infrastructure deficit.
So, so each year, we budget for approximately 1.5 million towards infrastructure.
Right.
Improvement, upgrades, improvement. And over and above that, we have assets that we don't fund for, plan for?
No. Every year for the last 10 years, we have, we have allocated a, a sum of money, and it's closer to two million dollars, that covers, that goes into infrastructure, that meets or exceeds the amount of depreciation that we incur in that year. In the hundred years prior to that, for, I'm gonna say most of those hundred years, the town didn't do that. So, the depreciation number, whether you fund it or not, it continues to increase on your books, but if you, if you fund it, if you take the two million dollars and you put it back in the infrastructure, your, your total assets increases, your undepreciated assets increase by at least as much as your depreciation, right? So, it's, it's the ratio, the ratio changes if you fund and you invest.
So, I'm still almost getting there, if you don't mind. So, we have a value of assets, and then we have a value of depreciated assets.
Depreciation, yes.
And what is, is there a difference? How much of a difference is there? I wonder...
Do you recall those numbers off the top, Jerry?
I don't know off the top of my head, but the example you're using, say our wastewater treatment plant was valued at thirty million dollars when we built it, and it's, and so we depreciated it, we say its useful life was thirty years, so we're gonna depreciate a million dollars a year. So, if it's 20 years old, the value of that asset today on our books would be the thirty million, less 20 million of depreciation, so the value is 10 million. So, in the study, they talk about net book value, so they would allocate, or say we have a 10 million dollar asset on our books today, where what Jeff is trying to say is we should look at our books, say, no, we have a 30 million dollar asset.
And I, so that's a net asset that Jerry mentioned, and what you're talking about is a total asset.
Total assets, or, better yet, just the depreciation, the 20 million in Jerry's example, the, the part of the asset that's been used up, right, that we've already gotten the benefit from, that we're going to have to replace.
Yeah. So, I understand that better now. Thank you very much. So, Danny, Danny has indicated that you had a suggestion, that, a response, I should say, and, and just mention that again, what, if you don't mind, so I could put it all together.
Yeah. What Danny, what Counselor McIsaac asked was whether I could, I could draft up a page, basically, to, to articulate my thoughts for you to consider in paper, so you could look at it and digest it. And that's certainly very possible.
Would we be setting an example? Because are we not recognized as one of the stronger units financially in our province? And would we be setting an example that may be, or a suggestion that may be, I wonder how well it might be received?
It's not gonna be...
Well, there's a couple things on that. I think, I think as far as fiscal policy, fiscal practice goes, I think we are, I think we're, you know, we're top, top of the heap. In terms of fiscal strength of the municipality, we're certainly challenged. You know, we have our challenges. Our economy is not booming. There are areas of the province that are doing better than we are economically, growth-wise. The market is stronger, so they're, they're, they have, they have a better tax base or situation than we have at the moment. Nonetheless, I think, as, as corporation, our policies and our practices are, are top of the heap. How this will be received, I don't know that we're, we're gonna, we're not gonna set an example with our position. What we're gonna do is contribute to the conversation. An idea that is based on the principle, or the, the intent of the original program, to focus it there, as opposed to a, an approach where, how can we share this money and make everybody happy, this, this windfall? To me, it's not a windfall. To me, it is, it is a, a federal response to a huge issue that unfortunately, because of data that was available at the time, got directed in a way that didn't, didn't most efficiently address the problem. The situation has changed, we have better data today, all municipalities do, and so there's an opportunity to direct the money more specifically to where, to where it can address the program intent.
So, when you do that, when you do that, correct me if I'm wrong, the rural municipalities, when, when we take our, if we take the stand that Jeff has suggested, and base it on the assets, so, so maybe the rural municipalities don't have the infrastructure that we have, which means we need more funding, that, that would, it's not going to bide well perhaps there, but it's not about, it's the, the fair and equitable.
Yeah.
It's about being fair, and fair is not equal.
I wondered, Jeff, the current liberal government is indicating more infrastructure money. How, do we have any indication how that might be dispersed through, through the gas tax, or is it a separate?
I'm pretty sure it won't be the gas tax. I'm pretty sure it'll be an application-based program as opposed to a, to a transfer, you know, with, this is a formula-based transfer. I don't, I don't think it'll be that, but it isn't clear yet what it will be. If, if I may, your worship, just to address something you said, it, it is not as cut and dry as, as towns having more assets than rurals, 'cause if you think of some of the rurals, like Kings County, Colchester, East Hans, maybe Picto County, there are some, there are some rural municipalities that have a lot of infrastructure because they have lots of villages, perhaps, where there is infrastructure. So, it isn't, it isn't a, a town rural issue so much as it is, you know, those, those rural municipalities that have lots of infrastructure, probably have infrastructure deficits that would, would rival ours in some cases, and I think they would appreciate the funding being directed in this kind of way. Interestingly, when we did the fiscal review process, if you read through the submissions that were made to UNSM, Kings County actually allocates infrastructure funding to their villages based on the infrastructure, not based on the population or, or anything else. They transfer funds to the villages, gas tax funds, that they receive as, as a municipality, to the villages on the basis of their infrastructure. So, there's a clue there that, that they actually understand...
Understand, yeah.
...and, and support that kind of approach.
Yeah. Thanks very much, your worship, and Jeff.
Madeline?
Thank you, your worship. I have two questions. The first one is, would you foresee our funding, our depreciation ever working against us in the future?
The, the fact that we, that we rate for and cover our depreciations out here...
Yes, yes. I'm, I'm sorry, I should clarify this, when it comes to the distribution, 'cause it is based on per capita, is it not? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, 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 sorry. No, that's my second question. Go ahead.
Do I see it working against us?
Possibly.
Anything is possible, but I, I don't, I cannot imagine that, that that would happen, that good practice, that responsible fiscal practice would be penalized. I, I can't imagine that, but yeah, anything's possible.
Okay.
I know, before my time, a few years before my time, the town had significant reserves, and I, I've read that counsel of the day was concerned about possibly being penalized by the province. So, back, back in the day, there was, you know, as there is now, discussion about municipal restructuring and whatnot. There was a sense that the town might get penalized for having the reserves it did, and so the town spent considerable amount of those reserves on infrastructure projects. You know, I don't know, I haven't seen anything in the last 12 years where any municipality's gotten penalized for its reserves, so I think the fear of that in the day was probably unfounded, and I would suggest that the fear of being penalized in the future for good practice today is probably just as likely not gonna happen.
Hope so. When it comes to, when it comes to, to dollars and cents, you never know.
You never know.
And my second question is, when it comes to fair and equitable distribution, I believe it's, what, 74%? Our population actually increases every day by about 74% with people that come in from the municipality to work here. They are using our roads.
Yes.
So, that is compounding, that's compounding the, the short, the shortness of, of the lifespan of, of some of our infrastructure. Would that be taken into consideration?
It isn't currently, in any, in any form, and...
Could we direct it?
We, that, that is the purpose of the discussion today, is what do we want to say about the gas tax formula?
Mm-hmm. 'Cause it is based per capita, as you said.
Yeah. Yes, so, so the, the numbers you're talking about, when you're talking about 74%, I believe that, that is data that comes from Statistics Canada.
Yeah.
That, that we have in our, in our community profile. So, that data is available and potentially could be used, for a purpose.
Good. That's, that's, that's part of the solution that I see. And what is Jerry's presentation? Is that going to, to help us make a decision? Are you here to make a presentation, Jerry?
No.
No?
No, I'm here for questions or comments.
Just to answer questions?
Yep.
Thanks.
Okay, Phil?
Good.
You good? Sandy?
I have a question. Will you do it there?
Need your light.
Would you just be able to list some of the assets that we depreciate?
Oh, sorry, I...
Sorry.
It's all right.
Yeah, we can, we can even sort of make a list. I think we do, we have categories, and probably could pull out some of the larger, larger items. I mean, everything, everything gets depreciated except for land. Land doesn't get depreciated. But everything physical, from our trucks, to our plows, to our buildings, our pipes, our sidewalks, our streets, that...
Everything.
Yep, yep, everything. Everything that you can physically touch that is a capital asset is part of the mix.
Good. Ken?
Hi.
You good? All right? Good to go. Okay, so, what on, do you wanna say what you're hearing?
Yeah.
What I'm hearing is the assets, consider the, the population increase. That's why our roads are twice as bad as, what they would be if just, right?
Powerfix doesn't use the same formula though.
Woo!
You won't get any money.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, so, Dan, sorry, Counselor McIsaac's suggestion was that I write something up. It will be fairly brief, and to the point, and Counselor Dawes makes a, makes an interesting point about the, the influx of people. That data is available, if you'd like me to include that as well, I can, and, easily, and, you know, maybe as early as Thursday night, I can have something for you.
That'd be good. I'm sorry, what on Thursday night?
I can have a brief for you Thursday night.
Thank you. Yeah, so can we make a decision Thursday night? If, all right? I just wanna set, no, yeah, or whatever the decision is, to send it back, or to do that, okay? All right, so we're good.
As well, as well, just a, a comment, your worship. This is a fairly convoluted, complex matter, matter, and I would like to have the CAOs and the finance officers' recommendation as well, which I'm assuming we're gonna be seeing, because I think that's what we need. I mean, I'll be very honest, I am quite financially astute, but this is really deep stuff that I have not delved into, and I'll be very honest, and I'm gonna rely heavily on staff for their opinion, because this is something they do every day, and that's why they're paid the bucks. But I would feel much more comfortable to support my staff in this endeavor versus getting into any discussion on something that I haven't got a clue what I'm discussing. And I'll be perfectly blunt on that, because...
That's the first time.
Okay, perfectly honest.
Always.
Thank you, your worship.
Good. Well, that's... Well, that's why I was looking towards Jerry. You're going to give us something to work on here. All right, so we're good on that one? All right, so the next one is the. Yeah, it wouldn't hurt. Oh, go ahead.
Okay, I'll make a motion. I'll crank something over here. I would like to make a motion, your worship, that we direct staff to explore options using the existing gas tax formula based on pro, on assess, on recommendations based on assessments. I think that's the wording you're looking for, Jeff, or depreciation, sorry, depreciation of assets owned by the town. And that recommendation be brought forth in a timely manner to council by staff.
Move the second today, discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. All those in favor? Contrary? Motion carried. Good, okay, so Town Caucus terms of reference. So, yeah, they're just asking. They've got, uh, proposed amendments in here. I think the first part is, I read it backwards, so.
Thank you, your worship. Can we just go through the, the amendments that they want to make, the scribbly lines? I've seen some here that I'm kind of. I, I have questions and concerns on. So if we could just briefly go through what they do want to change, then we could comment on what they want to. We'll re, read the whole thing or whatever then, and then what they want us to take out and add in.
Sounds good. Okay, so we're on page, we're, we're just on the appendix, just so everybody's on the same page with the lines crossed out. Two C, they're taking out to have representation from Towns Caucus on Provincial and Municipal Roundtable, which is sensible because that's already done. Go ahead.
I just want to, before we do the process, just want to clarify, there are two documents that were circulated. The first one was the terms, the Terms of Reference as amended in 2010. And then there is this document which has got proposed changes. Was there an in-between document? Because the language in the second document doesn't follow the language in the first document. And I'm, I, I know the section we're about to go into, your worship, does. But when we get later and you do a comparative of these two documents, they're not the same. There's some significant language difference. And I know Counselor Mooney and I and Counselor McIsaac, we've been on Town Caucus since 2010, I believe, where we've been involved. We've not made any amendments since 2010 to the regulations. Yet this set, this document that we're discussing, that's got this Danny says the squiggly lines. The language is different than the 2010, so has something happened in the meantime? Pardon?
Said, I wish I would have had that question before.
Well, I just realized it this morning when I sat and compared the two documents, to be perfectly honest. Yeah, I looked at them this morning early and I went, whoa. I, I just went for the original document, then I went back to the orig-
You just start with the mandate, it's not even the same.
We can go, yeah, you see what I mean, Pam? It's, the documents are different.
Yeah, no, it's clear that they're not.
And Phil, I don't remember, we never did any, you've got a memory of an elephant, but we, we've never, we never made any change, amendments at Town Caucus meetings on the regulations that I could. Yeah, so I'm just, I was just wondering about the language, Pam, on this. If, I mean, I think we can discuss it and we can pass it, but there's only.
I mean, I want to ask.
Yeah, yeah, and there's only one thing that, there was only one that bothered me, and that was in the Article Five Executive. Because the language there was dramatically different. And that's, I just wanted to, when we get to that item, but the rest of it's pretty good. But there were some language differences, that's all. Sorry about that, your worship, but I want to point that out.
No, don't be sorry. I mean, I, I want to know too. I didn't even, I just looked at what was crossed out because it's relatively simple. Just, I'm just, look, I'm going to call them. I got to call. Where's contact? Anybody get, did you get the number? It's not. Oh, here it is. I got it. So if you go up top, I didn't, I wasn't aware of this, under 1A. Yeah, so the additions are in bold. It's just hard for me to see on mic. So it's just saying the role in promoting and awareness of the unique issues and challenges. Okay, we all right? Anybody, here's the deal. If anybody's opposed, just wave or flash a light or whatever. Okay, we're good with 1A. 2A, to create a strong voice for towns within and amended, is just within the UNSM framework. Okay, 2C, we're going to take that out, which makes sense unless anybody disagrees. Go ahead.
Just a quick question. Um, is representation on, on the provincial roundtable, is that written in another document?
Okay, so let me ask that.
That's, I'm just wondering about that, your worship. Yeah, I, you know, as long as it's covered, it, it's there for a reason. You know what I mean? So as long as it's in another document that says that we have representation from towns, no problem.
Okay, good. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I don't, it's just a question on that. I, I wonder, even if the Towns Caucus has that in their Terms of Reference, they can't impose themselves on Provincial Municipal Roundtable. So it's really up to whoever creates that roundtable to decide what the Terms of Reference and the makeup is. So it might not be necessary to say in this document. Oh, goals and objectives, sorry, sorry. Yes, you're correct.
Okay, um, D, to develop strategies. As opposed to, okay, and address common issues. Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
Why are they recommending the change from public policies and concerns? Do you know, do they say why they're doing that? Why they want to change it?
No.
I mean.
Just, as, as opposed to writing a policy.
I'd like to know the reason why they want to make all these changes, period. If we don't, if I don't know, I mean, it's fine to say we agree, but why are we agreeing to something that, if it worked? Why are we eliminating that, it's already proven that it's worked or hasn't, not proven that it hasn't worked? I don't know.
I, I think part of the reason for these, and I can be corrected by Pam who's on the, there now, I sat there for four years, so. I think the problem is, is the language is to change the languages. Because we've moved within UNSM in new directions. I mean, at one point, it's just a language cleanup. I mean, public policies, we, we really can't develop public policies that, as a Town Caucus, can't develop a public policy and say, okay, towns, you're going to do it. Now, we can suggest strategies, and we can come up with strategies that may or may not want to do, like we're doing here this morning with the gas tax. It's more of a strategy. But we can't come into a public policy. I think it's kind of just cleaning up the language a little bit, so, so I think that's what it, that's what the intent is there. So I'm just adding 10 cents worth.
Not evolved in the 21st century.
Yeah, that's right, 21st.
F, um, not relevant to work of head of schools, which you have great understanding, okay, yeah, no, I mean that. Okay, G, doesn't add anything of value, to present a positive image, well. Right, really? But, but again, right, it goes right back to language, just trying to change the language. Okay, so on the top of the next page, pay annual dues as opposed to capital fees, which is true. Uh, is determined by two-thirds of the Towns Caucus membership present at the annual general meeting. Language again, really. Okay, fiscal. I'm on number five, just starting five. 5A, the executive shall consist of five elected municipal officials. Yeah, go ahead. This is the one you have problems with?
Yeah, this is where the language is messed up. And if you look at the original document from 2010, um, which unfortunately, a second, I can dig up here in two seconds or less, there it is.
Says, it was seven.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, now, that, that, this is what I want right here. Sorry, that, I just, the window closed on me. If you look at the original language, it says, "The executive shall consist of seven elected municipal officials comprised of a chair, vice-chair, past-chair, and four members-at-large." It does not mention in the original document secretary or treasurer. And I, my own recollection is we were doing that internal appointment. Then it says in 5A, in the original document, "The executive shall appoint a secretary and a treasurer, or a secretary-treasurer who may be members of the executive." And the tradition has been, it's usually been the CAO off the chair. So in this case, Pam, you're the Chair of Town Caucus, so I'm assuming Jeff is in that role of treasurer. That's what used to be.
That's what is right now.
Yeah, and that's what it was. So in the original document, it didn't specify in, as pretend, in the amended document, it's a totally different kettle of fish. Because in the amended document, it makes reference to a secretary-treasurer, which we don't basically have. And it's, in the language, it says secretary-treasurer, and it says two members-at-large, but the original document said four members-at-large. And the intent of the four members-at-large was two of those would be secretary or treasurer if they wanted to. So to me, I think we should leave it exactly the way it is. And leave it at seven elected officials, including your chair, your vice-chair, your past-chair, and four members-at-large. Because I think the more people you have around that, you've got to give more representation. I mean, if you're going to cut it back to five, well, two positions are shot right off the bat. Your chair and your past-chair positions are already been, are filled, because they're elected by the general membership. So you could technically, in a situation, have a past-chair from, say, Yarmouth, and the new chair from Yarmouth. And you could have a, quite a heavy stilt there with, oh, imbalance. Or you could have a regional, and one of the, the problems we've had at Town Caucus is that there's been a regional cluster. So you ended up with the caucus having a heavy representation, say, from central or from other areas, so. Yeah, Kentful Windsor, Kentful Windsor, Kent, Kentful Windsor, prime example. They've, they've been, they've been dominating that Town Caucus for years in Kentful Windsor. And I mean, it's, I think we should leave it at seven and that would, and encourage more people to get involved. More the merrier, I, I agree.
I'm just looking at the secretary-treasurer thing that, that would be done by staff now. So, so for example, like you just said, it, it was at, it was at seven, so.
Still is at seven. It is at seven.
Yeah, okay, that, without, until we make the changes. But because, um, because the secretary and treasurer were two of those positions.
Not necessarily, they say.
No, I know not necessarily, but that's what they, that's what was happening, really, so.
And they put in, and maybe members of staff, or the exact, and organs and staff options.
So you're saying, you're saying keep it at seven for the diversity, not for.
Yeah, for the, for diversity. You want to try, I mean, this is a, I mean, we've got a, for, we've got, we've got a community that.
We've got communities, you know, what have we got, 50 towns left that are kicking around? So 50 towns with seven representation. How much? 25, I'm sorry, you're right, 25. So that gives seven towns a voice around the table, and that's, that's good. That's a good thing. I mean, and, and it's, we're doing a lot of teleconferencing, we're doing a lot of stuff now that you're not traveling as much. I, I think it's, I think the more the merrier.
Okay, we can, we can only, we can submit that. Okay? Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. Uh, you pretty well answered, answered the question that I had about the secretary-treasurer. And I also asked, I was going to ask for clarification from, from Counselor Langel on that again. The CAO is automatically included as part of that? The CAO of the, of the, uh, of the chair?
So that's what happens now. So as chair, Jeff pretty much knows he's going to look after the money piece.
Well, secretary treasurer was previously CAO, was it not?
Go ahead. Yes, it was.
In, no, uh, it was tradition within this document, within this structure. If you flip ahead to the next page, page six, you'll see that, um, that's one of the proposals to make the CAO of the chair serve as the financial officer for the Towns Caucus. That currently is not the rule, that's been more of the tradition.
Yeah. Okay, so we would, so what we are suggesting is to leave every, to, to accept 5A as presented other than changing the two members to four. But the four members were never really changed, were they, Counselor Langel? All right, so what you're suggesting is leave it the way it is, but with the original four members? So we would be not changing, but changing at the same time? All right, thank you. Is that right, Mr. CAO?
Oh, sorry. Okay, so the, the concern I have is the concern we started with, is that we have a 2010 document which says four members-at-large, and we have a 2015 document that is proposing to change from, from seven to five members on the executive. But it's not showing the two members as, as being a change from four. So the conclusion I reach is that it isn't four currently, that it's two, and that there's been some.
We're missing that document, we're missing the changes.
That, where we went from the 2010 doc, sorry? So you're saying the two is a change, but it isn't highlighted as a change in the new?
But, but look at line two on the one that's, that's changed, that they're changing. So what Jeff is saying, it says past-chair and two members, and then they cross out at-large, see where it says that? But on the previous document, it says four members, so this doesn't show a change. So the question is, do we have four? Do we have?
We have two.
Two.
We have four now. We have four. This is why this document, I think, missed.
So we're changing and not changing at the same time?
That's exactly, we have, that's.
Yeah.
And I think there's a gap here, there's a.
That, well, that's it. Something's missing. Did you just call again? No answer, okay. Yeah, maybe do that. Give Jeff my lopes. What were you going to say there?
I was going to say, Pam, why don't we just leave 5A the way it was in the original document? You know, and that would be, it still consists of seven elected municipal officials comprised of a chair, vice-chair, past-chair, and four members-at-large. "The executive shall appoint a secretary and a treasurer, or a secretary-treasurer who may be members of the executive or municipal staff." And just leave it, because the idea is, is that you may have a town that the CAO may not want to do the job. You know what I mean? And I mean, we've been lucky the last number of years because it's been like, well, same people, Kentful and Windsor, they've been, they've agreed to take it on. But their, their CAOs have been very pro UNSM. We've been very lucky on that. But there are some CAOs that aren't pro UNSM, and that's why I'm thinking, just give that flexibility. It's no big deal. I mean, you, Towns Caucus has got, what, $12,000 in the bank or $15,000? Not a lot of money to manage, and there's not a lot of checks.
No, I don't, no, that's, that's not, yeah, that's not the point. I guess it's num, like, you go to number six where they're saying, let's, let's do it like this. That the chair's CAO, so we'd have to change that. I, I don't, I, I like it the way it is. I do.
What the seven, you mean?
But you see now.
Yeah, I don't care if it's five or seven, doesn't matter to me. I, I know the more the merrier, but to me, I just, the more at the table, it's hard to make.
Now, you see, Pam, in the original document, section six is, uh, section. Now, you see, Pam, in the original document, section six is, section six is general meetings.
Yeah, I know, so six over here, they're adding that.
Yeah.
That CAO's piece.
Yeah. Which is fine.
Which isn't a lot for someone to ask.
They moved it down to eight, so they're kind of cleaning it up a little bit.
Yeah. So Jeff's going to call, he's just calling one of the private numbers, just to see, because there's, there's something missing.
Yeah, nothing missing.
There's a document missing, so let's leave, where are we?
So we agreed on the seven?
Five A until we figure something out.
Agreed on seven.
Okay, number seven, role of UNSM staff.
Whoa, 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 there's a few other things in the executive here we haven't touched on.
Where are we? Oh, sorry, I was on that other page.
Five B.
Yeah, so we, we're going to figure out the two representatives. The positions of chair, vice-chair, two representatives on the UNSM board are elected by the Towns Caucus members. So it could be two or it could be four, you're saying to add, change it to four.
Leave it to four, yeah, leave it the way it is.
Okay, good, so allow a check.
Okay.
So B?
So B is fine, I mean, B is what we're doing now, anyway.
You're saying to change it to four.
No, 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 this, this is referring to our two representatives that we put on the UNSM board. Is that we elect at the board, so that's fine, we're doing that now, anyway.
Just, 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 just need a light. No, just, thank you. Just to stick within, from protocol, I, because of my back, I, I am taking some tablets and I'm asking for, for permission to leave the table for a moment. Thank you.
Okay, all right, so C. Wait a minute, past president's ex officio, that's good. Chair must have at least one year's experience on the executive. Okay, well, they're taking that out. Anybody disagree with that?
Disagree with that myself. Personally, I think, I think it should have, anybody should have some experience before, before holding a position like this. I don't, I don't see why they even, would even consider taking that out. Experience always pays off in the end when you have somebody that knows, because they've been there for a year, and then you ask them, then they want to go further into position, they, at least they have some experience, know what they're talking about, just to get somebody from the floor that never done, never done the position, even though there's elected people that are elected that's never done it before, I understand that also, but I think this is, this is in there for a reason, and I think it should stay there, myself personally. I think it's a good thing. Experience, you can't, you can't, you know, you can't put a price on experience when you have it, so.
Okay, anybody else? I disagree, I think you don't need, that's just me, so there's two, anybody else? I only say that because I'm sitting here with no experience, and it, it's working, so.
There you go. Yeah, but you were on Town Caucus.
No, I mean, as the mayor. Right, I mean, it, you know, as a mayor, I was on Town Caucus for a year, yes. But I think we all go to the meetings, or, I guess if you're not going to the meetings, then, so anybody else? What do you think? Okay, C, as per the UNSM elections policy, the chair shall serve a one-year term eligible for reelection for one additional one-year term. What was that before? Go ahead.
One of the concerns I have about UNSM, I mean, is that, these bloody terms, I mean, when you become the president of UNSM, you have one year kick at the can, I mean, good God, what can you do in a year? Reality, you know, and the same thing with Towns Caucus Chair, now, we do reelect the Town Caucus Chair, you know, and technically, the chair was reelected the next, yeah, I'd like to see that two-year term right off the bat, so you're in there, you have time to get your feet wet, and then you know what you're doing, because right now, these UNSM presidents are all in the same boat, but they finally know what they're doing, they spent a whole year in Gaga Land, learning stuff, and then boom, they're gone. And a UNSM president can't even reoffer the way it's set up now. Town Caucus Chair, I personally would like to see it go for a two-year term, and then at least you know you're, can get something done. Uh, no, just the, the members of the, the members of caucus are two-year terms, but the chair has got to be, go before the public every year for reelection, I understand, for a maximum, for a maximum of three, yeah, to the old. So I'd like to see it, the chair go for a two-year term, and that's it, I mean, no renewal, I mean, you're, you're up in two years so that we don't have a lot of rote, so we have a lot of routine.
So let's put, how about if we put under this one, consider two-year terms?
Yeah, there's a little note, see what people think.
All right.
Yeah.
That would work, and then we can see where they go, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you, Your Worship. I would, I'd be interested in, in hearing from previous chairs as to what their, what their thoughts on this is.
Medley, I'm sorry, Your Worship. I know in talking to Dave Corkum, who was the president of UNSM, also president of Town Caucus, he was very frustrated with the one-year term in both, like, now, in Dave's case, he was readily reelec, usually what's happening now is the chair of Town Caucus is usually always reelected for a second year. I mean, I've yet to see one in my years not get reelected, I mean, if they want to serve, if they're crazy enough to serve for two years, what the heck, go for it. So there's never been an issue, but I do know that if you're starting something in Town Caucus, it takes more than a year to finish it. I mean, if you're going to do an initiative, it takes you two bloody years to get the thing done, at least, you're absolutely right, Medley, it takes, so, I mean, what the heck, let, let the person know off the front, hey, you got a two-year term, you get your two-year mandate, and go for it.
Okay, so, so D, the vice-chair shall serve a one-year term eligible for reelection for two additional one-year terms. Does that matter? As per UNSM elections policy, two representatives elected to the UNSM board shall have a two-year term eligible for reelection for one additional two-year term. That makes more sense, okay. Position of past-chair on the executive shall not constitute a year of service in terms of eligibility. I don't know, if they're not sure it's necessary, then we should leave it in. All right? Yeah, let's put that in, because you know what, that, somebody's going to ask that. Is your service on the, as a past, go ahead.
I think the reason for this is, is that the way UNSM structures the Town Caucus is that you've got a, it's like a, a taxi meter, you're there for a certain period of time, and the reason the past-chair, so you could technically have a, a past-chair sitting there, and then that past-chair wants to reoffer down the road to come back on Town Caucus. We had a, well, we had a prime example, the Mayor of Windsor, prime example, he's back on Town Caucus, it's like a recycle game up there. So, so that's what happened, so he was chair for a while, then he wants to come back, so by making it not constituting a year of service means he can do that, he can do that. Okay, so the idea is, is if you're sitting there counting, then you get two-year, two-year, you're gone, you can't come back. So I was there for two years, I didn't go back, I couldn't go back, okay? The reality is that if you're a past-chair, you can go back, because it doesn't constitute a year of service, so therefore it doesn't, the, the taxi meter stops as soon as you become the past-chair. So in your case, Pam, you've sat on Town Caucus for two, for one year, you then are chair for another year, so that, you're, you've got another two years you could serve there in some capacity, but then, you're going to be past-chair, so therefore you'll automatically get another year or two, depending if the person is, the person's going to go. So, but if, but let's say, for example, that second term, you've stepped down, you're now past-chair, the meter stops ticking, so therefore you can sit for two more years in Town Caucus as past-chair and say, oh, I'm going to run again. So then the meter starts again, so you get another two and another two, that's why we have the same people all the time on these different agencies, because it's, it's a meter chance for them to go. So I think in this question, we have to ask ourselves, do we want to do that? To me, I think the meter should keep ticking, you know?
So I've, I've watched, you can keep your light on so we can discuss it, but, but I've watched, and I, I, I understand that, that some feel it's the same people, but it's the people that are running. So, so, so for example, like a comment, like, well, nobody would, no, nobody ever gets elected from this end of the province, but, but there you were, and there I am, you know what I mean? Like it's, it's in Jimmy, and. Yeah, you got, you have to run to make it. Yeah, well, exactly, Danny, you got, you have to want to run, so, so I guess when you have a choice of two people.
Yeah, I, I guess, I don't see, what I'd like to have seen on this, and I don't see it, is about elections. I, I think if you're going to run for an election, and you want to run, I don't think a note is good enough. I think you ought to be there to, to answer questions or whatever. Like, the, the last past election for caucus was terrible. I mean, they had three, four people that wasn't even there, and they got elected, but not even showing up. A lot of people had the same question and concern. If you're going to show, if you want to run for a position, you'd be hard pressed to get elected on council, or any, any, any government, federal, provincial, if you don't show up for meetings, and there to be, represent people, and represent yourself as, here I am, this is the person I want you to elect. They just send a note, or have somebody stand up and said, Joe Blow or Little Susie wants to run, and put their hand up and vote for him, I, I can't recollect who these people are.
So, so obviously, the people in the room knew who they were.
Obviously, they did, but I'm not, I'm not saying that's, what I'm saying, it's wrong, they should be there, I guess that's what I'm saying, and there's nothing in any of this caucus stuff. You, you see how caucus, you see how Town Caucus works, you protect the people that are there, that are there, that are there, all the time, same 10 people, we had this argument with Corkum, it's the same, 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 I've been there for, well, this is my third term, and I haven't seen just maybe a couple, a couple of changes, I've seen the same, same people from Halifax, same people from Kentville, Windsor, and all that, they've been there for a number of years, and they're there, they're there, and, and what really puts salt in the wound is, is the way that people get elected, you don't even have to be there to get elected. That's, that's undemocratic for as I'm concerned, that's just my point.
That was addressed, I think you addressed it, Danny.
What's that?
Go ahead.
Did you not address that, that particular, that particular point at the UNSM?
I don't, I don't, I don't believe.
Someone did, I know someone did, because explanations, very valid explanations were given.
Explanation, explanation is fine, if, if you're there trying to explain why, why whoever's not there, all I'm saying is, that's fine, if people, people want to elect somebody that ain't there to, to represent themselves and ask questions, that's fine, let them do it. I'm saying I'm not in favor of it, that's all, and there's nothing on here to suggest that, you know, we should even have this. They got all kinds of other stuff to make sure that they get reelected, 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 that's all in here.
Go ahead, you're on.
Thank you.
I'm finished.
Our, our.
Sorry.
Our procedures, are they not ruled as, as, let's say, national boards are, memberships on national boards, they were just changed a year or two years ago, and that, that had to do with the maximum number of years in total that anyone could serve on a board?
Well, I don't know if we're going by national boards' policies, but we're going by whatever.
These were new national rules.
Yeah, so.
So my question is, we don't go by those, we make our own?
Yeah, that's what we're doing now.
All right. And we can only, we can only vote for those that decide to run and throw their, throw their hat in the ring.
You can only vote for the people that decide to run.
Yes.
And it, it's just like anything else, whether it's council or not, people can do nothing in four years, and it's up to the.
Or they can do magic.
To. Right? So it has.
Yes.
Sometimes very little to do with the work you do, or, or anything else, which is a shame, but that's, that's the voting process. All right, okay, uh, okay, let's go, okay. All right, so the top of page 11, I'm on J, meetings of the executive shall take place a minimum of two times per year. Okay, you're on the top of page 11, it's five J. All right, financial, six, chair, CAO shall serve, okay, we're going to leave this until we figure out what they're doing?
This is totally new, because, and this is formalizing the role of the CAO in the process, so to me, I think it's good to put it in there, because, and that would be very clear, that if somebody is going to run for Town Caucus Chair, they will have discussed it with their CAO, and to see if the CAO is on board, because that's the idea, so before the CAO is roped into it, there's an agreement between the two parties that they're happy.
I'm laughing, because, I'm laughing, but that's the truth, I did it, the first thing I did was I went to Jeff and I said, are you okay with this? And he just smiled, and he said.
Guess so.
And I said, thanks, I'm doing it anyway. And here we are. My, my concern was, was time and, and things like that, because I didn't realize the CAO piece until you mentioned it to me, which was, but I run everything by him anyway. Okay. And I'm so glad you're thrilled. Okay, six, six B. It's so simple, go ahead.
I was just going to ask a question, someone just brought up Jerry's name, and I thought, well, should we consider, should we consider adding the Director of Finance, either/or? Input Director.
Just here to serve.
Jeff's just going to tell him to do it anyway.
That'll be the same conversation Pam had with Jeff, Jeff will have with me, so.
That's, that's what I said, Jeff's going to ask him to do it anyway.
I'm going, yeah, well, I just thought to ask, would we consider including?
No, because Jerry's not. My staff, yeah.
All right.
Does that make sense to you? Okay?
Yeah, it does.
Okay, six B, signing authority shall be executed by treasurer and at least one other member of the, the chair and the CAO's, chair's CAO. Remember to yell if my head's down. Seven, role of UNSM staff, staff shall support, perform secretarial functions, detailed description, see appendix A. Okay, and we're down to eight B. I haven't even read it yet.
Well, no, I, I don't think we should jump to eight B, I think we should look at eight A, which they didn't make any change, which blows me away, that the general meetings of Town Caucus will take a place of minimum four times per year, I mean, I'm looking how many times Pam, in the past, they couldn't get quorum? You know, that, to me, that would be a logical change, to recommend they go to two or three per year, a minimum, I mean, say a minimum of four, well, I don't think we've had a minimum of four, you know, because.
So let's do, so, so there's always one at the, is there not always one at the spring workshop?
There's always one at the spring workshop.
Always one at the fall workshop.
And that's it, those are your minimum of two. It's a minimum. So you've covered your bases, you've had a minimum of two, and if you want to have additional ones, it's at the discretion of the chair, which is wonderful if there's stuff to be. Well, you could say an up to four fill, yeah, you're right, but I, I think this idea of strapping, so you're going to have a minimum of four, I remember last winter, remember the hardship they had to get, they, they couldn't get, they, they couldn't get, they couldn't get a quorum, and they.
They can, but.
They still didn't get a quorum.
I'm not sure if people know how to use the. No, really, like, people just don't care. Right, they only care when it's something current, and it's two. Okay, so I'm, I am going to put that suggestion in there, I'll put minimum of twice, we won't put the up to four, because anybody that does more than four is not going to get elected another year, anyway. Okay. No, we're not doing up two, we're just doing a minimum of two, but not up to four, yeah. Okay, eight B, UNSM staff, okay, shall be sent out by staff to all members at least seven days prior to the set meeting date. That's fair. Quorum, executive meeting, standing committee meetings, task force meeting, no business shall be transacted at any general meetings, especially unless a quorum is present. Quorum of executives shall be defined by three members, okay, so we have to figure out whether this is five or seven.
Be four.
Guess it would.
Be four. We have seven now.
Yeah.
So would be, that should be four members.
If, yeah, if we, if they agree with these changes yet. So we're going to put the, under nine, we're going to put four.
Be UNSM anyway.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, quorum for any general meeting or special meeting shall be defined as at least one-third, don't clear your throat because I'll put your light on. A quorum for any, okay, defines at least one-third of all towns that are members of the UNSM. Like, how pitiful is that? I'm sorry.
So, uh, I think we should, it should be 50%. You know, 50% plus one, really, that, you can't have a quorum of one-third. I mean, you can't do it. I mean, it's, I don't know who ramped that up, but 50% plus one...
Probably because of numbers that, that show up.
That's all the people that want you to vote that don't show up.
Yeah, I know. No, I mean, it's, this, this is the, this is just a general meeting for everybody, right?
Yeah, everybody, anybody.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Sometimes they just don't. I don't get it.
The way it's set up, I would be needing to say nobody else can. I'm still representing the town.
But it only takes one, right?
It takes one, four of us.
So one people out of seven for each town. Some don't even send anybody to UNSM. Madeline?
Thank you, worship. So I'm confused, straighten me out. Are we going by the, the definition of a quorum or are we going by our own rules?
No, we're going by the definition of a quorum.
Good.
Would be the majority.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, so voting. There's nothing changed there. 11, decision-making. Decisions of the executive should be determined by a majority vote. That works. Communication, the only thing that's there, the town caucus went practical, practicable, will make every effort to provide copies of all information to UNSM. Yeah, definitely. Okay, subcommittees. The towns caucus may form standing committees or town, subcommittees to achieve goals. Yeah, each subcommittee, subcommittee, okay, five, uh, sees coming out, maximum of five voting members. Substaffs, okay, this is the same thing. This is all language. Okay? Okay, 14, conflict of interest. Does that mean there is no code of conduct? Code of Conduct.
Code of Conduct.
Okay, so, well, we do conflict of interest, but we also have a code of conduct, right? Yeah, well, that needs to go back in. I think. Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Okay, so we'll suggest...
What is it, is it...
Yeah, go ahead.
No, even though I'm in a hurry to get out of here. The code of conduct, is it legal and binding? It's not legal and binding. You can, you can sign a code of conduct, but what does it really mean? Does it really mean you're held, held to the code of conduct?
It's mute.
I don't think, I think it's, it, it's just, just saying yes, you agree, but if, for whatever, you're doing it because it, it, it's, it's, yeah, what I'm saying, it's meaningful at the time, but meaningless.
Yeah.
Am I correct by saying that?
Well, you probably are, but the solicitor, let's ask the solicitor on that.
And I'm, I'm only asking just, just for the sake of asking.
No, it's a good question.
Because there, there must be something here that they want to take it out for whatever reason. If it's that gray area, then, if it's a gray area, it's a gray area. That's all it is. I think there were some problems years ago that some, whoever, whoever, that said, well, we should have a code of conduct. I think might have been the behavior of some counselors around at that particular, that time, and that's, you know, what I'm talking about. Same session we had in Cape Breton that I had to speak up there. Anyway, so maybe that's what it's all become of that, I don't know, so. If it's there, it's, they want to take it out, they're taking it out for a reason, I guess. That's just my question.
So, so if you look back to the 2010 document, the heading there was code of conduct, but it actually didn't refer to the code of conduct. It still only referred to the municipal conflict of interest legislation. So I think changing the label here was simply aligning what was in the section with the title. Right, the question of the code of conduct doesn't have any teeth. Well, there's, there's nothing, as far as the municipal code of conduct that you guys signed, uh, there's nothing in the municipal government act that gives council any authority to, to deal with a breach of the code of conduct. However...
Wouldn't it be the same for complementing or so?
Uh, no.
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 That's, no.
Phew. Uh, no, it's not the same as, as conflict of interest. Uh, there is a specific act to that and, and a clear process. But that being said, and this, this is a question you should ask the solicitor, is you sign a document agreeing to, to, to certain things, uh, could that ever be held against you in a, in a court proceeding? Possibly, but that's, that's a legal question. I'm just saying, in the act, in the municipal government act, council has no authority related to codes of conduct.
I don't have it wrong anyway. Just asking a question.
No, it's a good question. Yeah, then it was to line up with, with what they were saying.
And that's fine.
Oh, you're on next, Madeline.
Thank you, worship. To me, code of conduct, we all sign them and to me, it's, um, it's, it's not just a quest, it's not just a legal question, but it's also a question of ethics and morals when you go to sit around a table with your, with your colleagues. So I would say it either does or should have more teeth to it than just...
Doesn't, though.
Yeah.
You're on.
Thank you, worship. Uh, the, uh, the conflict of interest legislation has a punitive clause in community, it's quite clear, we intervene there, whereas a document we sign around this table, there's no punitive clause in there. I mean, you sign the document, big deal. You know, what do you do? You know what I mean? It's, it's up to council. I mean, we as a council have, do not have the authority to toss any of us off, off the table. It's up to the individual member to resign or withdraw or whatever. But under that, under that document that we sign, or the voters in the next election, you know, when I went through the turn feathering back in 2008 when we had this, the Scarlet Letter. Scarlet Letter, I mean, there was a prime example. You know, I was not in conflict in any way because I had no pecuniary gain or wrote the letter, but everybody was upset, there was a big discussion. It came to council, technically shouldn't even come because it was a mood issue. It'd be my decision what I want, but what the heck, liberty rant and rave a little bit. But the reality is, is that the, the document we signed in this room, we have no punitive clause in there. Now, it may be something down the road, we may want to put a punitive clause in, or maybe UNSM may want to look at punitive clauses in those, in that particular document, but it, it really is a meaningless document. It's, it's, I mean, as, as I think somebody mentioned, it's more, I think Madeline said moral and ethics. Yeah, well, some politicians are a little sketchy on the moral and ethics at times, you know, and that's, that's, that's an issue, so it's a hard one to figure out.
They haven't said the electorate will take care of that part anyways.
Yeah, they do. No, they don't. No, they don't. Oh, sorry.
I think the perfect example was the famous Phil Mooney story when we had Communities in Bloom and we were having the, the spring workshop and a lady come up to Phil and she said, "Phil, do you know," she had to, Phil and I were sitting at the registration, she said, "Do you know how to take care of slugs?" And Phil said, "Yeah, you vote them out the next election."
It is a good line. Okay, so we are at...
Right, in the area.
Where are we?
Right here.
15.
Yeah, you go.
Oh, that's why I added that, okay. Amendments, okay, towns caucus annual, general meetings just describing, and UNSM staff. Any proposed changes to the general management shall be submitted. Okay, so they already said seven days. They might change that back to seven and we're good, we're good to go.
Seven days, seven days, one other?
Last one, same, yeah, change it to...
I think we solved the mystery of the documents. You noticed it too, didn't you, Jeff? Yeah. If you look at dated of approval, the document that Pam, that was sent to us from UNSM was originally approved on February 2002, but the document that we are working on was amended in 2010. So the original, the one that, that UNSM sat down, whoever provided this to the UNSM committee, whoever it was, gave them the old 2002 document, when they should have given them the 2010 document, which was the amended document. So that's the missing step. Okay, that's, that's what happened.
Okay.
So that's the document, the document, we should have been amending it under 2002.
What's this?
So Pam, you've thrown up a whole list of things. Amended, we've amended.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't even heard a year and I don't figure it out.
Yeah.
And I might just do that. I have to give you guys credit, just like I publicly, I say something intelligent.
You can say you know what the problem was, have to go, you're just going to like it for five years, well, then you can go after again and I'm going to break the decision.
Madeline?
Still there. Thank you, worship. Um, geez, my question was on the amended, oh, it says, it says here, amended November 2015, question mark, question mark. Maybe I should turn off my light. When I ask, was this, did UNSM send this out in November and we're just working on it now, or did UNSM...
Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, it was, it was sent out prior to the fall conference and it was on the agenda for towns caucus at the fall conference. And it was agreed, if I'm recalling correctly, it was agreed that no decision would be made there, that it would be considered by the councils and perhaps, maybe it wasn't sent out long enough ahead of the caucus meeting for people to be able to look at it.
I think, thank you, worship. This was brought up at the September meeting, is what we brought up.
Up at the September meeting. I'm sorry, the document that we saw was sent out to us in September. But a lot of us didn't get it. For some reason, in the circulation of the list, it didn't go to all the counselors, it just, it's, most cases it went to the CAOs for circulation, some groups, some didn't get. Some got it and some didn't get it. So then, when it was brought up to the towns caucus meeting after the UNSM, during the UNSM conference in November, a lot of us were looking like deer in the headlights, like, what's going on with this? Where did this come from? And there was, because we did not get notice, a motion was moved to postpone it to the spring workshop town caucus. And that would give us a chance for the individual councils to come back, to comment.